Well, this is an easy one to play. Why you got it all?
What's up everybody? Now we're looking at three bet pots and four bet pots from the blinds against still position. I'm Jack and cut off.
This is easy. You just call.
Church.
I mean, can't fold. Forty big blinds. You can three bet this or you could call this, I think.
I'd never three bet this.
Might be too good to three bet, maybe.
Yeah, not here.
I've never.
Check raising all day long.
Yeah.
Call.
That's raising big.
Big raise.
Small bet, big raise.
So why are you not betting? Why are you not three betting queen eight here? And what, what, uh, what are you pulling your three bets from?
Well, offsuit, offsuit variety. I'm gonna find like taking jack off. I'm gonna find against the cutoff here. I'm gonna probably find some.
I think it's a function of, uh.
King eight offsuit, king seven offsuit, king nine.
It's a function of the big blind range, honestly, like the range is quite different in the big blind. If you look at small, like what we were thinking about, what I was thinking about Peter was a small blind or like button range. That's you pull a lot more from these hands in small blinded button than you do from the big blind.
The silver has so many flats pre flop from the big blank because he ain't such good ones and it's always making small opens.
Yeah, Dylan, Dylan's correct. That's, that's the reason.
I think it's further down the tree.
Check turn, ninety percent check.
Are you guys, uh, three betting queen eight offsuit, queen nine offsuit?
That's correct. That's where you're pulling those from.
I think if you look at the button range from the silver, it's gonna have everything sort of calling at like a ninety percent frequency. To eighty percent frequency across the board and then some hands are gonna be three betting a little bit.
Alright, I'm under the impression that we wanna look at the range.
Yep.
King seven, king eight, king nine, king jack off, ace jack.
Oh, pretty low frequency, so right? Aside from ace jack.
Oh, I, I, I was saying, I don't find these.
That's sixteen, uh, that's sixteen combos. So like when you see, when you say like air quotes low frequency. Like a quarter of that is about equivalent to half what you would see in a suited one. So I mean, it's misleading of sort.
Wow.
And of course, it would be fine if you simplified to doing like king nine, queen nine off hundred percent. That's not a bad.
Yeah, man. Yeah. Honestly, like you don't have to have mixed frequencies of all of those. Like if you wanted just to make your life easy and pick two combos. You know, or pick suits and just pick those. So you can standardize your process.
I say, I say it off, king nine off, ace jack off, like just pick those three sort of thing and.
I think that's pretty reasonable.
I feel like I just never three bet from like, uh, not never, but I don't nearly enough three bet from blinds defending. I'm just flat too much.
Well, see, yeah, and, um, you're kind of priced in to do that mentally, right? The problem is you're also signing up for a disadvantage post flop. So to combat that, you know, you have to have some three bets.
And in all of our hand history reviews, when we, uh, we're looking at something and someone has a marginal call against big point three bet, we're like, God, but people just never find enough three bets. Usually just fold. And like you can take advantage of that for your opponents.
Yeah, we should, we should be three betting more often with the queen eights and queen nine of the world.
Definitely. If there's one position where I want to overdo it, it's there definitely.
Okay, what do we do here, Louis? What do we do?
I'm in the phone camp, yeah.
Slow roll.
He mashes that call button on every other one when we wanted to bait it.
Slow roll. Got it. Nailed it. Alright, time banks running down. Let's click the button. WTF emojis are flying.
You know, you can't touch the emoji box when you have a good hand.
You've learned the hard way. Yeah, what's up?
Yeah, so why are we three betting queen nine off and? King nine off against the cutoff fifty big blinds. Isn't that blocking the bottom of his range?
Exactly.
Uh, not quite. What, what hands is the cutoff opening at forty big blinds? Uh, at the bottom of his offsuit.
I thought it was offsuit nine.
King nine, it's gonna be offsuit tens.
Also, it's, uh, it's maybe, maybe probably offsuit ten suited nines, I see.
Now, the at forty big blinds to cut off his offsuit nines and suited sixes.
That's right. And so when we find those hands, we're targeting the bottom of his range, uh, that combines both the suited variety and his offsuit variety. And so we just get a lot of folds from the bottom of his range there. He's even gonna start folding some offsuit tens. Which are actually hands that dominate us. So when a nine flops, it's way less likely that he has one. And we're good a lot more often.
It's cleaner as well. But yeah, your idea was right, Dooly. We attacked the bottom of his range.
These four bet pots are killing me.
Yeah, remove it.
Yeah, I think so. It's only because we're only at forty to sixty, right? The only, the only response is gonna be jam.
Yeah.
So this is a combo that we could three bet some.
No.
Like it's got some, it's, it's a piplo, but this is the hand class you'd be looking for, right? Am I wrong?
Yeah.
I feel like in game, I should be looking to three bet this all the time.
Against the button at forty big ones. It would be a very good pick. Against the cutoff, we need more like king seven, king eight, king nine. King six.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Dude, yeah.
I don't fully understand that concept, like, like how you're saying that, Lou.
Okay, well, oh, it's on my under computer, but I got you. Peter, I sent you a little while ago, uh.
I'll send you a DM if you want.
No, no, just look at this. So here's all it works in general. I have a ping issues because I got my internet upgraded and it's a little bit slow. Okay, there we go. So button. From the big line against the button, we're gonna pick king five, king six and king seven as bluffs. Okay, and against the cutoff, which is like one C before. Uh, we just move our range for with one pit. So it becomes king seven, king eight, king nine instead of king five, king six, king seven. So that's how three bed bluffing from the big line is done from against cutoff and button.
Can I just sort of like probe a little bit if we don't mind spending some time on this?
Go ahead.
So before, I can't remember who it was, but they said, I don't like, uh. They said it as if, as if it's a problem, like, don't we target the bottom of their range? And you guys are like, yeah, yeah, that's a good thing. How is that a good thing? Isn't it a bad thing if we're blocking like the bottom of their range? Cause isn't it like, like make their range stronger?
Nope.
So to help.
Concrete.
I was gonna say, yeah, I mean, you gotta look at the opening range. So like verse cutoff, he was saying, we're using seven, eight, nine, right, Louis? Seven, eight, nine?
Seven, eight, nine against the cutoffs.
So the floor of his offsuit range is offsuit nines.
No, it's not seven, eight, nine. It's eight, nine, ten. Uh, yeah, no, that's because we're.
I've scored sixty, not forty.
But here's their general idea, okay?
Yeah.
You're gonna see it, like, you know, offsuit nine. Okay, and then suited six, but think about the offsuit nine that he opens, okay? We're gonna use probably suited eights. And offsuit eights to attack the offsuit nines in his range. We're just attacking the weak part of his range with a weaker hand.
Wow, cause we don't interact with one of their range. We unblocked one of their range.
Exactly. We unblock by the bottom of his range, so we attack the direct bottom.
Nah.
Well, there's some overlap there too, Dylan, right? Like if you were to pick a nine. You're also targeting his offsuit ten X, right? Cause offsuit ten X versus three bets and just a miserable of a spot as like.
Exactly.
Queen ten offsuit isn't a miserable spot, the same as queen nine is. Like, um, these are all hands you're getting folds from.
So like, he opens offsuit nines, we use suited nines. We're gonna use mostly suited eights to attack his offsuit nines.
Okay.
So it's just like, you figure out the bottom of his opening range. And you say, okay, if I have a hand that is one pip under the bottom of his opening range, I can attack the bottom of his opening range with it.
Uh, yeah, okay, I get it now too. Cause I think it's good, additional concept, right? Is that if I do that, then anything he folds is good for me.
Anything he folds and then if you, if your card comes, it's clean.
Well, and you also gotta look at this, this revision of hands, like this is trash. Like we have a trash hand. You don't really wanna take it post flop. If you're able to convert this portion of your range into a very profitable portion of the range. Like we're playing a game of small edges and this is gonna create quite a big edge.
Especially, especially if players think that, oh, this guy just has nuts raising from the big blind. People overfold to that decision. It is more profitable to fight these three bets.
Um, Louie, that one's interesting. When we, uh, when we counter attack on turn, we need to go, we need to overbet.
Yeah, that's. See, I thought it was small.
Why would you bet small here with king high and an open ender?
Because I'm messing around.
Yeah. I mean, if I got, I, I'm gonna try my damnedest not to show down this trashy hand. Or if I do have to show it down, I wanna get all the cookies.
Yeah, you're gonna do that. Tell me you're gonna bet like over bet when the, the four comes on the turn.
No, I, um, I'm probably not over betting, but I am probably betting, uh.
I get it. Against a miss T bet.
I think on that board, I said we have some dunkleeds too.
Yeah.
What was the action on the flop? You clicked the buttons too fast, man. We don't even know what's going on.
Missed T bet, missed T bet.
Seven percent. It's a pair boards. We're not gonna do it that much.
So you took a check line.
Are you okay? Are you guys okay with checking on from the big?
Yeah, checking is good. Checking.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Three bet check is kind of a weird, but I mean, I think it's fine.
This one's not three bet though. This one's single raised.
I was.
Yeah, six big blinds in the pot.
Oh dude, come on. Yeah, I think this is a, this is a great over bet spot. I thought we were playing three bet pot.
What size?
Seven, six.
Well, we already saw it, seven, seven.
It still checks a lot.
He was not ready for it.
Maybe check, check, check raise on the turn.
This is what your opponents do too. You over bet turn and they're like, hold on at the time bank.
Hold on. I saw one go in there.
Oh, well, it's a paired board, so I don't think we get to go that bananas with our string blockers.
Oh, man, I really wanna go in the NFL.
He's got pocket fives, he's got pocket fours, he's got pocket eights.
Alright, but I have one question for you. Do you think we get here with this line with worse hands?
Uh, probab- believe. It's a, I mean, it's a single race. Yeah, we definitely do. We don't have all king highs here.
Yeah, but do we get better kings to fold if we do something? For sure. Do we get A size to fold? Maybe?
Hey, I, I'm in camp, I'm in team, I'm on, uh, in camp bet for sure. I just know.
Thirteen.
Uh, I think thirteen is reasonable, maybe eighteen at some minor frequency. I think we gotta bet big, but, um.
Kind of wanna go bigger than that, honestly. Um, I think we have boats and three X for value that still wanna just go bunkers.
I would go small.
I like eighteen.
No.
Why? Okay, so why would you go small after you go big on the turn?
Because.
It didn't go.
Trying to get a fold from a king eye, from an A sign. You know, so.
So you're unblocking brick spades, you're unblocking like a lot of his like random high card floats. I, I think like.
Do you need a big bet to get that job done?
I don't know. I don't know.
I might guess that we don't need to bet big to get a better king to fold.
I think if we bet, if we bet small, the ace is called.
So theoretically.
That's what I'm scared of, actually.
Okay, okay.
Hold on, hold on, I was, uh, I think theoretically, um, they're gonna even fold some pairs without a spade, like maybe, uh, lines and tens without a spade. If we bet big enough.
Ace four clubs.
Overbear, overbear holding.
Now what?
I mean, if you put a, if you pile, I think they gotta start folding some pairs if they don't have, sort of unblocking the backdoor flush.
So what kind of size would you go for?
Wait, hang on, isn't that backwards?
Yeah, like I don't think eighteen does it. I think you just jam.
Man wants to go all in, okay?
I like all in too, but it's like.
Two all ins? I would do seven.
I'm going thirteen.
Sheldon is going thirteen.
I honestly think it's never, I, I assume it's never thirteens. Either like all in or eighteen, honestly. I think thirty two is just too big. You might as well go in like it looks so awkward going thirty two.
Look at the solution. It might be a check for all we know.
Wow, look at that. He does do some jamming.
Thirteen or check. Never goes.
Do some, checks the highest AV.
Let's see what they fold when we jam. Supposed to fold when we jam. Like, I don't know population, honestly. I don't think population's folding in our repair, but I think they're gonna mix.
How did you find the jam, Ken?
Max, while we got, we have a lot of good hands, so we get to have a lot of, you know, we gotta go big for our bluffs too.
Maybe, maybe the solver prefers it with the lower equity, like no king highs.
And also, um, this is a part where the spades didn't get there and we might have bluffed some spades. So the spades didn't get there. Uh, if we had four to a straight, that didn't get there, but then our boats have been there the whole time, so.
Yeah, this is a pretty wild node, man. I don't, um.
It jams all the twos because they're blocking the wheel.
Yeah.
I guess.
All the twos.
And they're the lowest equity, obviously. So I guess we're just. King highs good enough here to check. Is that like really what it is?
Well, it's, I think you're, you're bluffing from the bottom of the deck usually. And you know how Louis was asking like what worse hands do we show up with here?
The deuce.
He, yeah, the deuce. The answer is the deuce. So like nine deuce is a much worse hand than king six.
But at least the six block is good because it's, it's a blocker too, right?
Six is a better blocker, for sure.
There's a lot of missed spades here. So you do it with missed spades more than anything.
What do they fold when we go bizarre?
Oh, but hang on, you know why it's doing it with missed spades? Look at, look at, look at the turn action that we took. Because the turn action we took was a really low frequency and so it's kind of like warping what we should do on the river. Because, yeah, the solver doesn't, doesn't bet this on the turn.
Wait, what? It wasn't so low frequency? I mean, I think it was like.
I think it was like seventy thirty to check on the turn. I'm pretty sure.
Okay, I wouldn't. Seventy thirty is reasonable though. It's not like, yeah.
They are folding over pairs, nines and tens. I didn't think jacks or queens before. I thought nines and tens would start folding.
Yeah, I mean, population's not folding, to be honest.
So if they have a spade, they call, uh, without a spade, I imagine.
With a spade, they call.
To be honest though, I mean, they're not showing up with those hands. Like who's checking pocket ten? It went check, check flop, right? Who's, who's checking those hands on the flop?
Yeah, not happening.
Yeah, yeah, it's true.
But you were right, Ken. Interesting.
Which means like, I think so often with our opponents, they're getting sticky with ace, king, ace, queen, with spade draws, like they're just so bricked.
Add smaller bets, I'll get those to fold.
Uh, I was gonna say low frequency, high frequency call.
We just went through this, Louis, man. King jacks too high. It's not, it's not king.
King jacks, the nuts, the stone cold nuts.
I mean, on this.
We're against the hijack this time, so you merely are.
It's like pocket kings, except we have just one king.
Yeah, this is just surely about five point five. No, it's half.
We're too deep to just bet five point five. We're pretty high in our value as well.
You can bet five point five, but the primary frequency is larger. I had to.
The stack's a pot's like two point five.
Yeah. I had to sort this out too. I used to be stuck on the small bet situation. Yeah, we just get that hand to fold.
Interesting. Garbage hands, please just throw it in the muck. That we have to call, obviously.
Uh, you can treat but this or things in this neighborhood. If it's not this, it's four off.
This is in the region, I think, at some frequency.
Okay, boom. I'm more like ace seven, ace eight, ace nine.
I think it prefers ace five, ace four.
Which makes sense, right? Cause it's cutoff. We just had king, seven, eight, nine, so ace four, five, six, right? Uh, still taking ace eight. Interesting.
Alright, my bad.
Weird.
Check.
Uh, we three bet?
Nope.
No, we follow it. Ooh, that's a.
Play check.
Really? Okay.
We got ace high, we got ace high, we're good.
Sure, we go for value here, surely.
No, I think check.
I kinda like check too.
He's supposed to, he's supposed to, um, range bet this card to some extent.
Yeah, right.
And then we get to pick off cheap bluffs.
I guess we have literally no kicker, but yeah.
That's the problem, right? Like he's gonna have this, which, you know.
Yeah, I guess, I guess as well, if we bet, what am I hoping to get called on? King high, king kicker, like, like on the aces and jacks, sorry, the jackson fives with the ace. Literally nothing. I literally target nothing with a bet there. That's terrible.
Yeah, and he's supposed to find some bluffs there because the ace is so good for him. It can get, it can get some tight holds from us.
I'm only getting calls from people who are thinking we're chopping playing the word. It's actually terrible. Alright, I regret everything I said.
What?
What are you doing, Louis?
It's just the nuts!
You're losing EV.
Wait, we're calling that? At the point one, losing negative point oh one EV.
Are you doing this in game, Louis?
On behalf of investors, I would like to express my.
Alan, I, I will even go to, this is what I do with your money.
Oh my God, I'm so offended. So offended.
I mean, king ten, jack ten, this is the area. Right? This is like an outlier. It should be in there, but it's not.
I mean, who's gonna take over when the king's gone anyways?
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, yeah, Louis, that's a, that's like a forty big blind play. This is sixty. We need to.
We not forty? Sixty. Ah, this is what I see.
But you gotta slow down. You're playing too many tables.
This is the nuts, what do you mean, Tim?
It's, it's five, it's a five.
This guy is late position. He's opening any two cards. I have a mark on him.
Ay caramba.
We gotta press the, the, the.
Only the mouse.
Squeeze the juice.
Alright, this is a, this is a terrible flop for us.
Check fold.
Oh, now it's an okay hard.
Bet.
Oh, no, yeah, Louis, Louis, bet.
You guys, you guys lead here.
Missed T bet, missed.
Alright, so check it out, check it out.
He didn't see but an ace high board. What do you think he has? He has no.
Okay, so you pick up the spit, you pick up the diamond. So you've got bluffs on the river. You pick up marginal equity where a king actually gives you the nuts. Like, why wouldn't you bet this?
Are you really thinking about diamonds here?
Yeah, I am.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm pretty sure.
So we are jamming if we bet here and then a diamond comes the river.
Oh, yeah.
You're jamming, exactly.
Okay, I like it.
Hundred percent.
Take the line, Louis. I'll help you.
Okay, we can do it again. We're gonna do this hand again after we play.
Eight point two five, Louis.
Thirteen, I already saw it. Thirteen, I already saw it.
You're going big if you bet here.
That's about the same.
Alright, sorry.
So if that was the three of diamond, you give up now, I think. You give up. If that was the three of diamonds, I think you go bananas. You still go bananas here, so.
Wait, you gave bananas with the negative really play. Interesting. Check, check.
He was never folding his ace.
I don't know about that.
Never.
Nah, I think silver calls everything.
Oh, don't be so results oriented.
He had a diamond blocker, no?
This is a raise.
Which is bad on the red.
Forty bigs, wait, forty bigs.
Forty bigs, this is more of a call, more of a call.
So what did we look at earlier? We already looked at this situation. When you're in the big blind, you're highly incentivized to call with your suited cards and realize equity. This is not raising.
This was the one hand that was the, the razor, but I think it was the largest stack size, right? It was sixty.
Yeah, yeah, a deeper.
Perhaps.
I think, um, at forty are.
Oh, no, sorry. This is under the gun we're looking at. We're looking under the gun late position three bet, then four bet is the ace five suited.
Yeah, ace five suited is just four bet hand. Check.
Obviously, we call.
Nice call.
Why would you raise?
Whoever wants to raise.
I like to raise bottom pair backdoor flush draw.
Okay, uh, it's just, it's kind of a connected board. I mean, you might raise this some. I, I just don't think turning bottom pair here needs to be.
I, I like to check raise bottom pair actually a lot, but I think maybe with a worse kicker, it's better.
Yeah, I actually, the thinking about check raising, it doesn't sound terrible because you're protecting your five, like he's seat betting a lot of stuff. Yes, you're kind of probably trimming out some shit that like you're currently beating, but on the other hands. You are protecting your bottom pair.
But you have a marginal made hand and you're turning it into a bluff.
Yeah, that's kinda where I'm at.
Yes, but the solver is not so simple as, um, as marginal made versus value. It likes a little bit of board coverage, so it goes through sometimes.
Yeah, this is our board. This is our board all day long. Nine, six, five, like big blind. This is, we got straight. Oh, we already have straights, like.
So you don't think he has straights? You don't think he has straights? You don't, we don't have them. We don't really have sets because we should be raising those pre flop. I think this is a pretty close. Yeah.
I think forty bigs on the small bears is flooding. Are they? The sixty bigs they're raising?
So verse RFI, I'm gonna look at the range real quick.
We have fives in Texas. No, we have.
You do have some fives and sixes. We don't have nines really, and you don't have full frequencies of all of these, whereas as the razor, he does. Now, if it was verse button, it's different. Like you don't have any of this stuff.
Okay, interesting. What are we raising in this blood? Just straight?
Draws, draws, blockers. Yeah, straight draws blockers.
Their best nines.
Two pairs.
Yeah, we also have an ace, like an ace just on its own is.
Seven X, eight X. Nine X are best up pairs.
Yeah, I just don't, uh.
It's very natural here.
Look, look at all of our fives. All of our fives are just calling.
Easy call.
Yeah, okay. Interesting, but five fours raising sometimes.
Sure, because you got the pair and.
It's, it's got semi bluff properties, right? Like you.
Uh, what, what, I, I have a question. Um, Louis, can you please change the nine to a diamond?
And you wanna, you wanna rainbow board texture?
Yes, because I think we raised a lot more of our, our five cent with low kicker.
It's gonna pull from your backdoor flush draws. It's gonna pull the same hand classes. It's not gonna pull from your five, I don't think. So look at your five, still not pulling from your fives. It's gonna pull from your backdoor flush draws. That has connectivity.
And the solver, you almost never bluff with bottom pair on, um, the flop.
I saw some spots, uh.
Not, not in a single race pot.
Honestly, it depends on the texture to, to answer that question. There are some spots.
The heuristic is not very clear to me, so.
Can you change the nine to a, or can we see the, um, what was it called, uh?
If you want some help with this.
The report.
It's gonna be, you're turning hands, you're turning your bottom pairs into bluffs when he has a lot of marginal pairs. So if it's like a king, queen, five or something like that, that's when you might turn your five, your five X into a bluff. Cause you're gonna be pushing his like strong draws off equity sometimes. His second pair, you're putting in miserable positions.
But don't, don't we like, um.
So basically if he's reading, then you might be able to get away with this.
Sorry. There was two people talking. I didn't hear.
I, 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 I said that we have like a nut, uh, like that, doesn't it, doesn't he have another advantage on like king, queen, five though? Isn't it a problem with check raising when he has another advantage? Not really.
Not really, not at all, actually. Like you're gonna have check raises on king, queen, five, twenty percent of the range or so should be check raising.
So we check raise the most on nine I and ten I boards.
Five as well.
No, we check raise big the most on nine I and ten I board. But everything that is under the ten I board. Our check raising frequency goes up as the board goes down.
Yeah, and you see like nine, nine, ten make a lot of intuitive sense, right? It's, there's gonna be a lot of continues for him that we're gonna need a little bit larger sizing to make him different. Like he's gonna have a lot of gut shots. He's gonna have like.
Also, he's betting three here, but I'm not sure if it's like three is, is, no, yeah, it's a small, it's a thing, but it's not a big portion. Like if he bets two, I think we have a much cleaner answer. Yeah. General heuristic is pretty much the same.
Same behavior.
Also, uh, notice how on A side boards, we don't meet MDF or almost don't, almost not meet MDF. Like he bets two, we should be defending somewhere around seventy percent here. Probably the line is here. Probably the line is close to this here. So on A side board, king eye board, we overfold on the flop.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
That's pretty standard out of position, right? To overfold.
On A side board and king I board.
Yeah, it's just gonna.
Cause your equity realization is garbage.
Yep, that's, that's exactly why. Uh, we fold this now, right? Like it's just, the board's gotten worse. King jack, got us.
I swear every time we fold, they put a bluff.
Alright.
Bloody silver's crushing us, boys.
I wanna keep some time to review hands.
Yeah.
So let's do. So let's do that.
Can you review hands from Drive Huddle now?
Perhaps, if you have the hand, if you just have the specifics, he's gonna put it into the GTO whiz probably.
I'm gonna see if I can get some hands, cause I have like some hands.
Oh, alright, alright, alright.
Ooh.
Let's see what happened here. We play the hand, big blind defense against the one and only Joe River. So.
Joseph River.
Joseph River, um, raised from button, can I hijack low jack? At, how deep is he? So he loses fifteen, so eighty big lines deep. Oh, again, alright, alright.
Sign in.
On the flop, I check, he see that small, and I thought it was a good check raise. I thought it was the.
Not a huge fan of check raising ace high boards, but if you're gonna do a combo, this is a good one.
This is the one.
This is.
Because as Louis taught me, it gets folds from better kings.
Yeah, this is the one, not cash.
Wouldn't it make more sense that it was like a queen X of clubs?
Yeah, on, uh, on an ace high board, the king is, uh, has some showdown value. I think it's gonna do it more with smaller ones.
Maybe, maybe so, we'll see.
Combo draws, low, low, low value combo draws.
But I think with this backdoor straight, this is good to do it.
I think it's gonna like king, king seven, king four more. Queen seven, queen four more. So it does quite a bit. Picks a big size though, Louis goes small.
Do I?
Now you pick three X, it's not really that small.
More than three. Okay, so check raise is good.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I think so. To, uh, look at the other combos everyone was mentioning though, just while you're here.
So the way it's gonna go very often, if you have a hand like king, queen of clubs, you just wanna call. You get, you get no better kings to fold, and you're very strong in your flush range, whereas if you have that.
If you isolate clubs, it'll look, uh, it'll look a little bit easier for people. I don't know if everyone's gonna be able to read that.
The?
Yeah, just isolate the clubs and the range. Yeah, there you go.
So if you just take this line for king eye, like all your best kings are, are checking and calling, because if you have a king, queen, and a queen rolls up, and your opponent has a queen, you're gonna cool her in a lot. Whereas if you have a, a hand like king four here, you're, you're raising as more merit, because you get better kings to fold. Uh, if the king comes after on the turn, it's clean, because we get better kings to fold. So it's gonna very often pick this part of the deck to raise, and this portion of the deck to call. That's just a general heuristic for flush draws. So, my king deuce.
Fine.
Not too, not too crazy. Big line raised to five or seven. Is that more of a five or a seven?
It's more of a seven, I think. But your size is probably more, yeah, it's more of a seven, even your sizes. You just went a little small. Oh man, you're gonna have to get the internet people on the phone, Louis.
Uh, seven, so on the turn, I didn't know what size I should have gone with.
I'm sorry, I just stepped away for a minute. What happened on the flop?
He just check raised.
Check raised? The six paired as well, so.
I'm not a fan of the small bet on the turn this deep. I think you're gonna, I wanna build a pot with all of your value.
Oh. Well, I guess that's right, wrong. Alright, so I should go bigger.
I think your size makes a lot more sense if you don't need to build a pot as urgently.
And he calls.
Then on the seven of hearts, you know, I don't really like having, having clubs here. It doesn't like having clubs here either.
Alright.
It's honestly, this is a weird one though, because like, we're in a completely different node.
Yeah. So save.
You and he like Pyo or something.
Yeah.
I can't work out how to exploit these hands, I'm just gonna grab a couple.
Have no combos. Nice. Nice, nice, nice. Okay, so on the turn, I should be betting big, not small, so that's my first mistake. And then after he calls the big bet, I shouldn't go for it on the river. Okay, I thought, I thought I was, I played it like quite fine, but no, I messed up. That was one. You guys got hands?
Looked at it, uh, if you looked at it at forty big blinds, Louis, it'd be pretty interesting.
Yep.
Yeah, you think it goes for it at forty?
I think it, I think the behavior is different at forty. You might be more, it may be more GTO approved at forty, how you played it.
Uh, you remember this one?
Oh. Let me see.
Large poodle.
A large poodle.
Well, I can tell you your first mistake here was trying to bluff the poodle. That guy's just not folding.
Look at him, he's calling my fluff, see that ace, queen, nothing.
Yeah, I remember this.
It's a pair board, dude. That doesn't, that doesn't really surprise me. That seems kinda, kinda standard.
Yeah, I think his call's fine. But I think, uh, I like your line. I think your line's fine. I think you played it good. Except for, what was it? The river? The river seems kinda, you wanna put the brakes on the river, I think. Cause we don't get folds from anything.
And the heart turns into a, a negative for us on the river. We wanted to have.
Right, I would agree with that too, too.
Driving factor to make a bluff, but on the river.
Agreed.
It's the opposite.
And it doesn't mean you can never bluff a heart on the river, but you know, the, it switches. It's good, good for you on the turn, it's bad for you on the river.
Okay. Alright, that's it for me. You guys got hands you wanna look at?
Um, I might. I can.
I think Dominic had one. He asked for it earlier. Got Dominic, go ahead then.
Louis, go, go ahead first, no problem.
Louis is a net. It's not gonna be funny.
Oh, uh. When he send you this hand, I don't think, uh, here, just look.
Sometimes the nets pull off the biggest stews. I, uh, I, I know the feeling.
I've been making fun of Dooley a little bit, because I saw him, I have a sample of one, where he was a bit nitty. And he's been trying to prove me otherwise ever since.
Alan, did you catch my, uh, my misclick, misreading the board at that table we played early in the morning yesterday, your time?
What, what? No, you, you sent me a message about it, I thought, and, uh, I, I.
I don't think I did. I was, uh, I, I four bet and then forgot the test, pot was four bet, and then thought I had a good bluff. He's just like, you know, four bet pot, he's just always calling, like.
I, uh, I missed that one.
Yeah, it was, and you were at the table and I noticed, I was like, uh.
Tables to know what's going on.
It's true.
He didn't see.
Unless your name's Louis Philippe, I catch all of them, then.
Yeah, but I show you, that's. Alright, somebody grab the screen, let's review a hand.
Alright, I'm ready.
Oh my goodness.
I'm fucking terrible at this game, sorry, yep.
Same here, don't worry.
So here we are, kinda standard spot, um, we, we raise.
Then, then, the first, the first thing, this, this is not okay, okay? When you save a hand, first off, you wanna make it in big blinds before you save the hand, or you take the screenshot.
You know, I thought I did, but it didn't save it that way.
Okay.
I, I thought that I, I did, because I play in big blinds.
We're gonna excuse you for, for this time.
Alright.
Hyper, Jesus.
Alright, so we raised the, if we're eighty big blinds effective roughly early in the tournament, we raise, uh, uh, the button with ace king off, we get called by. Nope, 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 nope.
River, he bets small, but you have the ace of club and the flush completed, and I think that's a masterful bluff.
I, I felt like it was right. I mean, I feel like his river, I've been looking for these, these, his river bet is, um, you know, under half pot. He's just so scared, you know?
This is an interesting one, I like this.
Yeah, I haven't done a full study session, so this is just the one I screenshotted while I was in the game, because I knew it was an interesting spot. Um, can we look it up? So it's, uh, seven, seven, three, um, um, hijack versus button, three bet, eighty big blinds effective.
You know, I'm kind of curious if, uh, maybe like a, a weaker ace makes a better candidate, but, uh.
Well, that's a thing, but I'm sitting here with it as a club, that's the reason, yeah.
Yep, but.
Cause of course, this is the line I take with like ace, queen of clubs or something. I bet flop, I'm not quite sure about turn, I wanna get value on the river.
I like this line, to be honest, I think.
I'm sorry, how, how deep are we?
Eighty, eighty to start?
Okay, and then it's.
Or more like a hundred to start, actually, because eighty's after it, uh, after we bet. Alright, I'll get back to you.
I have a couple of random hands to just show how terrible I am at this game.
Perfect, that's exactly what we're looking for.
Do you want first?
No, you go, you go, you go. I didn't realize that already, how did you go?
Um, okay, just a few quick informations, um, player one was fish, player two, player three, player eight, uh, Rex. Okay, it's good, um.
Is this the one you won?
Oh no, the, I was third place.
This is, uh, how deep are you? You have like a mountain of chips. I know party poker starts deep, but like.
Yeah, it's final, final two tables, um, I guess, twelve players or F players left. Eleven, and, um, yeah, I'm, I'm not very super aggressive at this point, and, um, player three was, uh, well, very active with open raising, and so I decided to use some ECM pressure on him.
So, uh, I don't hate this, I just think you probably want an ace or a king if you're gonna be, uh, stepping into the Thunderdome with this guy.
Yeah, normally I would agree, but because of, I'm really don't three bet a lot, I just, um, used the momentum and thought, okay, maybe get a bit of out of line and, um, yeah, pick this.
Instinctually, you're attacking the right person. Like, this is the guy, this is the guy you're making money from, for sure, at this stage of the tournament.
But you need suited aces, wheels, suited kings.
You can even pick trashy offsuit aces, but like, you, you'd need a blocker.
You need a big blocker. Your, this is a great chippy V bluff, okay, but this is not a chippy V situation. So you need to shift your bluffs from like high offsuit combos to low suited wheels, like ace five, ace four, uh, hands like suited kings, maybe a king five suited, maybe a king ten suited, something like that.
Okay, yep, but I, I don't think this is bad. I just think it's, you could be setting yourself up for, uh.
Also, uh, uh, in general, okay, when you're at ICM, if you have a nine or an eight in your hand, you're against late positions, not good. And if you have a ten or a jack, you're against early positions, not good. Doesn't mean you're gonna fold, but you're gonna get less action and gonna be more. Down downs.
Okay, but get even worse.
The off, the off-suited connectors along the pair access are also gonna wanna call a lot more because of their straight realization. Uh, and here, because you're against the button, he's actually opening worse tens and worse jacks than this. So you wanna keep him in with those ones.
Yeah, we can, we can go, like, uh, I think we drove the pre-flop point, point home.
Okay, now he min fee bit, uh, format. And at this point, I was, um, because he was very active, I don't think he has so much strong hands, but maybe, yeah, he want to induce, uh, with aces, kings. And some, um, very low, um, yeah, ace, uh, suited trash or ace, uh, off-suited trash hands.
So have you seen this guy four bet once at this point?
No, no.
He has kings, he has kings.
Yeah. Problem with it is, it's like, I feel like the ego is getting overly involved here. Like, you've been talking like, okay, this guy's been opening a lot, you have all the chips, so you, you have this, like, you're trying to put him in his place essentially, and you're, you're like expanding your range based off, like, you, he's opening more than you think he should be opening.
No, no, not really. I, I don't think he's, uh, was out of line with his opening raise. I just said he's, he was very active, but I don't. He opened maybe GTO ranges. I don't think there's something leveling going on here. Uh, I just was.
Alright, well, I'll trust that.
I really like his mid format, um, but I think he's capable of doing it with, uh, some plus, not.
Well, I, I mean, this is, this is just an easy fold at this point, like, we picked a combo that's questionable already. And then we get four bet, and like, the jig is up.
Yeah, and we're out of position. Yeah, I agree with that, but, um, I misplayed the hand really, and it's yet still even worse. But I decide to call in game, and, um, so, okay, I can outplay him post flop and make some pressure.
Oh man, so I think calling is the least, most attractive option here.
Oh, yeah.
Now you have a really inflated pot versus a uncapped range, out of position, worth a ton of equity if it's final two tables. Like, you, you look like you're close to chip leader, and this guy's got a lot of chips, so I'm assuming he's one of the top chip people also. Like, I, I think you don't even really have much of a calling range here. I think you're gonna be jamming pre-flop, or you're gonna be folding mostly.
You're right, I, um, run it in HSC, and, and what you say is hundred percently correct. Um, only traps are some aces and, um, some mixing with some.
Yeah, see, that makes sense. Like, if you got like the stone cold nuts here, and you've been four bet, like, yeah, sure. Put it, put him in a, put him in a pickle post flop, but, uh.
What, what, was I dry button on this play? Okay, I, I call. Um, flop, yeah, I guess, uh, it's hundred percent check.
Uh, see, man, this is, this is rough, like.
When do we get to hold this hand?
This is a disaster.
Oh my god, is there, is there a fold button on your computer? Did you break it? Like, what happened?
I, I deleted the fold button because folding like no money, so, yeah.
I think the correct play here, I know it, is just to open.
Micro three bet, man, like, uh.
Now he bets ten percent.
We, we are three players left, uh, on the final table, so, um, yeah, I, I can't, I have a little bit of comeback.
We've made it here, like, okay, like, you could maybe target kings and queens here, or like weak, weak ace X with like a click here, like, if you're really getting into the weeds with it, like, you got an okay combo for that, I guess.
But even his, even his four bet bluffs have gotten there.
Yeah, exactly. He didn't four bet ace jack off to fold this flop.
Ten percent bet, okay, just see your turn.
I don't like calling at all, I don't like calling at all.
Oh my god, Dominic, Dominic, the next time you realize, you make a mistake, okay? Do me a favor.
Yeah, I. Why I pulled the hand out to show you?
Hey, well, I, I commend you for putting this, this hand out there, because a lot of people would just bury this.
Yeah.
But, uh, I think this is good, this is constructive, you know?
I, I, I guess I was, yeah, I was, was the first in chips also, so, um, yeah, I burnt a lot of money, okay.
Dominic, I think I have to give you my classic line. This is fucking terrible. I'm on my knees, I'm begging, Dominic, please.
No, you can't, what will, uh, Willen do?
He's gonna check. And you're gonna bluff catch him.
So, and I, I tanked one minute, I thought, oh, I know he has all the aces, uh, in his four bet range, but I really think, hmm, will he take back some of them?
I have.
What do we do for value?
I have two simple question for you here, Dominic, two very. I have two simple question for you here, Dominic. Two very simple questions, okay? First off, having a club in your hand here is good or bad?
Yeah, it's bad, okay.
It's bad. It kills your action. Second of all, having a jack here in your hand is good or bad?
Very bad.
So you have the perfect double blocker that is super bad to call with.
Honestly, like, I har- I have a hard time finding bluffs that you beat at this point. And like the ones that you do beat sometimes, like, okay, maybe king jack, maybe some lower frequency of like king ten or something like that. Like, you don't beat king ten, never mind. Like, it'd be king jack and king queen are basically the only ones. And like, you block a lot of those.
Does it have like exactly ace four diamonds here or something like that?
A lot of value hands, or?
Well, his value hands just beat you because they're, they're big pairs and then they're ace X. Like, that's what his value here.
Do you really think he, he bet kings, queens, jacks on this size?
Yeah, I think after he goes check, check, turn, check river, you probably can.
In an ICM environment, this is like, it's nuts in a four bet pot to bet those hands. I don't think he bets those hands. But I do think he bets every, every ace X he has, which is gonna be like a mountain of ace X.
Yeah, ace four diamonds surely is his hand, right?
Uh, okay, I, I like really his play and, uh, I misplayed completely, but, yeah.
Why, why the jack is, uh,
Yeah, see, honestly, ace nine is a reasonable bluff.
I have a question. So the jack is bad because you block hands like king jack, queen jack, uh, stuff like that, that could be bluffing this time.
Okay, like, like the,
The miss, king jack missed here and you block it. The clubs miss here, you block it. So it's a double, you block the, the miss straight, you block the miss flush.
Okay, so he don't bluff, uh, enough?
Well, it doesn't matter whether he bluffs enough or not. You don't have, you have the worst combo to call with.
Yeah, I mean, he took an aggressive line. He took a very aggressive line here with his ace nine off, but to be honest, like, it's not crazy if he's like super wide. Like, he's got a reasonable bluff combo. He gets better ace X to fold pre-flop pretty frequently, I think, um, in this scenario. And like, he's beating like your kings, your queens that you might have here. Like, I guess you don't have those. You would be four betting. I don't know, man. Like, this is, this is kind of no man's land for me. Um,
When, uh, when the turn goes check, check, did you consider block betting the river here?
Ooh, that's a, that's an interesting one.
Oh, yeah. B has it.
I don't, I, I think, I think Pete's got the answer. If you make it here, I think maybe a really small block bet, fold to a raise is probably what I would.
That makes sense.
But what you want to call, uh, the block bit with eights, nines, I don't think you, uh, mini four bet. So I just think I'm value turning.
It doesn't matter what it goes with. It's less expensive than you.
Yeah, yeah. There you go. Yeah.
But, but, yeah, overall, the mistake is pre-flop and we see if you do, or how important it is to have a solid pre-flop game. If we do mistakes there, they get more and more expensive post flop.
Yeah, it was, you definitely compounded the issues, right? Like,
Was there a bet on the flop?
Yes, he, uh, bet ten, ten percent.
Okay, so we could definitely fold flop as well.
Yeah, I think so.
Because on, usually on a sideboard, you're gonna overfold a little bit.
Yeah.
I agree. Uh, if you like, I have one more hand.
Sure, yeah, put it up, man. After that one, I'm ready for another one.
That was, that was, that was a very instinctive.
There's no way, there's no way it's like that one, so it's gonna be, it's gonna be better, I'm sure.
But it's not my normal play, so it was very, really, uh, yeah, off, but, yeah, I guess it's happening sometimes to everyone. Okay, um, same players. Uh, this was the big blind before and this was the blind before.
So is this final table bubble?
No, this is final table.
Okay, got it.
Um, uh, I don't open a lot. Uh, it was very carded with some standard, but more, I was more on tighter side. Uh,
Can we just make that screen bigger?
How many bigs is there?
When you have, when you're playing it? Is there any possible?
It looked like about thirty.
The, wait, what?
It's possible to zoom in on this replayer?
Twenty-seven and a half, yeah.
I have to find the right hand. Oh, shit.
It's a top one, isn't it? It's a top one, right? Top one. Oh, you're saying it's not that one, right?
No, oh, I hate party poker. It's so annoying.
Hmm.
Um, was it things? I, I have an other idea. That's faster. Oh, it's so slow. No. Normally it was one of the lastest hands, so we can go back here. This one? Yeah, I guess. Okay, spoiler, but, okay, um, I can't pull it.
Didn't actually say it was too quick.
Bigger. So why is it? Where's the replay? Oh, God. That's, sorry.
Uh, it's not funny. What was the other one? It's a different window.
Yes, maybe. Okay, now, um, now we are on B. I hope you can see. Is it really, really super small or is it okay?
I don't know, man. I see a fine personally.
Yeah, it's fine for me.
So, um, yeah, I got three handed button. Easy open.
It's like twenty-four bigs, right?
Oh, honestly, hey, by the way, okay, so this, you're second in chips. That monster stack is the aggressive guy from earlier?
No. He's, he's a very, he's a very good reg. Uh, this one, player three in the big blind.
Okay, so you have a short stack and in a good, a good aggressive reg, who's gonna be putting that guy in a big spot and that guy's gonna be calling because he's aggressive. Why, why even open this? Like, it's free money to fold, I think. Like, you let them play a pot because it's gonna happen. And you can collect second place money without any friction. I know you have an ace blocker and like i- it's a reasonable hand, but I, I think making, and like, if you look, if you put this in HRC or something, it'll probably say this is a fine open at some frequency. But if these guys are, if this guy's a good reg, he's got all the chips and this other guy's aggressive, they're gonna play a pot and you're gonna collect free money. Like, I, I just don't see the reason in opening this at all.
Yeah, you're, good reg is gonna pressure you a lot too, right?
Well, he can't, how, how can he? Well, okay, fair point, right? That, it's a double reason why you don't open this. He's a good reg, so he's gonna put you in a hard spot because you have to fold tightly here, right? Yeah, that's, if that's what you're meaning, right?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. The player two, three bats a lot because you're the middle stack and he's a good reg.
I, I just don't see Meriden opening this at this point in your arrangement.
Okay, I, I agree, but I was really, really tight and, um, I understand the, uh, um,
Yeah, that's when I wouldn't even,
The function of, There seems to be a running theme to these hands.
But one point is, um, ICM isn't that high anymore at, as three players left. And if I auto fold, uh, round to ten percent of my hands, I think it's, uh, difficult, but,
Yeah, but Dominic,
They, 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 uh,
Yep.
It's a fun, okay, we, we can raise it on some, um, frequencies. Okay.
I hear what you're, I hear what you're saying, Dominic.
I think it's their right reasoning with the wrong combos.
Yeah, like, um, the thing is, you know, you're gonna have a harder time winning the tournament if you're folding, but an easier time making second place money, which is already the most probable outcome in the situation you're in.
Okay.
So,
One information, it's bounty tournament. Uh, he has hundred bucks and he has three hundred twenty and I have two hundred forty or something like that.
What's the bottom? Also, is this not an open jam?
It's, he's too deep. It's twenty-seven big blinds. I, I thought about that. I thought about that and I think twenty-seven's probably pushing it.
Yeah.
It's less, it's less than twenty-seven, isn't it?
Let's go.
I, 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 maybe it is. I don't know. I thought it was twenty-seven. I put in, oh, it's way more than twenty-seven, actually. Isn't it?
Yeah, so, seven hundred thousand dollar.
Twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-five, twenty-six.
But one point, maybe it's not, uh, important, but, um, you know, we had a lot of blind, both blind, uh, spots, he, uh, raises with a bigger stack into me, I folded a lot and after we get even and so on, uh, he limped and I raised him often, he always calls often and but this,
See, yeah, like, you're just adding the evidence that you should be folding this. Like, you are highly incentivized to not play pots with this guy because every chip out of your stack into his, into his chip stack is dollars directly out of your pocket.
Yeah.
Like, the, 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 conversely, it's not as true for a player two. Chips out of your stack into his stack, um, they mean less. They, they equal no dollars for him and they don't really take away dollars from you as long as you remain above player three here. Player three getting your chips is it's very bad compared to player two getting your chips.
That's true, yeah. Okay, well, I make, uh,
On this flop, your C bet can be much smaller too.
Yeah, I mean, your size is fine. I, I, I mean, if you wanted to, if you wanted to nitpick it, definitely, you can, uh, you could go smaller, but I think this is fine. You could go bigger too, I think.
Yeah, I don't hate a third.
Um, I think it's fine, to be honest.
You can size everything down a little bit.
I'll take with ICM and I prefer like one point two.
Uh, maybe you're right.
It's also, it's a dry, somewhat disconnected.
Well, and you also have to take into consideration the player type he's playing against. If this guy, he just said that he's been playing a lot of pots with this guy and the guy defends always, so it's like that would incentivize me to bet a little bit larger to generate some fold equity.
Okay.
What do you think about checking with this hand?
Yeah, I don't hate that either, to be honest. I mean, I, I kinda like betting a little bit more, but I mean, it's probably a fine check.
Oh, because of the, of the ace high value?
Yeah, and,
Why not?
And like, if you think of it, this guy is three betting a lot of aces here. So he's devoid of aces, so ace high is gonna be good here a reasonable amount of time. And, uh, the queen is kind of neutral uh, for you guys. You have lots of queens. He defends lots of queens. Um, and I mean, with queen ten six, there's a lot of straight draws. Your hand doesn't wanna face a check raise here.
By the way, did you, uh,
Put chips in the pot for the reason that Galen was saying, like, we don't wanna give this guy chips because we do probably have to fold if he check raises us here.
Did you, uh, did you actually HRC this spot yet, by the way?
No.
Okay, I'm looking at a range. Um, the button's got twenty, the small blind's got forty, the big blind's got ten, so you know, like proportionally, it's a bit different, but it's, it's close enough. And opening this hand is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven pips out.
Wow.
Like,
Okay.
The floor of the opening range here is actually ace nine off.
Okay, that's a big leak. Thanks.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I'm just, um, it's not that it's a big leak, it's just the, you're not adjusting to the ICMs of the situation. Like, you didn't recognize the fact that you don't, you really don't wanna be putting chips into the pot here as second in chips with about twice as many chips as big blind. That's the only thing. You just didn't adjust to that. And you didn't recognize that good reg who has all the chips and aggressive short stack equals, um, someone's going all in very shortly.
Yes, thanks. Good point. Okay, back to the end, um, yeah, something okay, C bet, but, um, to be honest, I like the checkback more if I think now about it. And, yeah. I was a bit nervous. I don't normally play, uh, twenty-two dollars, so, so a little bit of money scared, um, and, yeah, good rec.
Yeah.
So, um, I pull a bet I don't really like because he was,
Right, yeah. So the, the five changes nothing.
Yeah.
Right? That's a bricky five, changes nothing, doesn't improve your hand at all. Like, this is, uh, you're, you're, you're straight trying to bully a guy who, uh, doesn't take well to being bullied.
Yeah, you, if you're trying to make a ten or a six fold, a five is not gonna change things for you.
Yeah, you're, you're,
I don't think I can get the ten to fold, the queen, uh, no way. Um, yeah.
Maybe a gut shot, you get to fold, but it, it's one of those things, like, you're putting yourself into the job that player two should be doing. Like, player two could be easily putting his chips at risk, putting pressure on this guy. Like, yeah, you can just sit back and collect money.
Yeah.
But, uh,
Best line, yeah.
Okay, so you bet and what does he do? He called. Yeah, I mean, let's see what we get on the river.
The jig is out.
Yes.
Man, the nine, ay, caramba, like, okay, so his value already beats you and now some of his, some of his, like, draws got there with a pair or a straight. Um, yeah, where, this is bad news bears, man.
Yeah, the nine,
And you've also, you've shifted the final table dynamic. This point, this pot has reached the point to where if you lose this, he, you're now on the chopping block and I, I, he just doesn't have too much in his range that he's committing that many chips with and folding at this point.
Yeah, my self process in game was, um, what hands he will call versus the shop? Ten, maybe, left catcher, I don't know.
Six. I can, I can tell you almost all of them at this point.
King jack passive draw because of ICM, he don't check raise, um, or, yeah, turn something into,
He's, he's the one with,
He will call, um, a nine. I don't think either, so, yeah, I, I was tanking a bit, maybe a bit too long and yeah, decided to check back because of,
What legitimate hand do you play like this as well, if you decide to bluff, right?
Jack, jack, uh, king jack, jack nine. Like, you got, you got straights, maybe queen nine. Queen, uh, nine, ten maybe does the, well, nine, ten checks the turn, but uh, you're gonna have some stuff here. Seven, eight got there also. We didn't even notice seven, eight. Like, uh, so that nine, like, completes top and bottoms.
And middle, seven, eight, jack eight, king jack. Three straights got there, right?
Uh, I, I feel like we looked at this last week too, that like the small blind, big blind are always gonna have a lot of like six through nines range, so you generally look, 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 looking for them to have at least a pair in that situation most times.
He has some straights, some two pairs here. You don't block any of it. You could give up.
I think giving up was smart. And like, uh, I mean, so the fact that this guy is that sticky with a combo like this, I'm just, it, it kinda reinforces the idea that, you know, I've been probably driving into the dirt at this point. It's, this guy's going to, he, he's gonna go broke through player two. Player two's gonna eventually get this guy. It's just what's gonna happen. It's either player three is gonna eventually overtake player two and win the tournament or, um, he's gonna, the more probable thing that's gonna happen is he's gonna float with fourth pair and just get beat.
Or you get a value hand against this guy, right? Like, if he's calling you that,
Yeah, that's the, that's the, that's the adjustment, right? Like,
He wants to fight you, so you don't respond by just like bluffing with.
You change your approach, your betting construction, like your range construction to a more linear, linear arrangement. Like, you, you just don't have polar bluffs versus this guy because he's obviously not folding anything.
I agree. Let it go. Thanks.
But this, uh, this was my two, yeah, costly.
Yeah, these are good. Honestly, like, this is, these are the hands that you learn from. Like, uh, I'm glad you sho- you shared these. Because, um, there's some pretty reasonably easy adjustments you could make that would greatly improve your odds of winning situations like this.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for your input.
Anytime.
Yeah, good. Thank you. Um, we're still around. If anybody else has hands that they wanna put up, you know, I, I don't know what Louis got on the,
I'm gonna run, I'll, um, I'll just tell you guys, if you're curious, uh, I ran that, uh, that ace king bluffer from earlier. It's silver approved. Silver goes for it.
Good, awesome, yeah.
The one thing following up with GTO wizard on that hand is I bet flop quarter pot on a paired, on a paired, low paired, uh, up and GTO wizard. And GTO wizard wants to go bigger cuz, you know, the, the caller just never connects with the low paired forward, right?
Right.
It's not, it's like seven, seven, three and he just doesn't have seven, he doesn't have three, so.
Good, yeah, I liked it, I honestly, I thought it was good, I'm just torn, like in my mind, I'm thinking. Is this a value bet or is this a complete bluff?
Yeah, right. So I should run to dinner, but uh I wanted to share that, I'll set up.
All right, thank you.
Good luck in your games.
Yep, you too.
Hello. Okay, um, this guy had a pretty big bounty, he opened, everybody folds. I'm the chip leader by a mile, I'm just wondering what the bottom of the calling range is here. Um, I was kinda feeling frustrated, so I called with queen deuce off and uh somehow luck boxed it.
How many uh, what, okay, so you're chip leader by a reasonable margin and um. What percentage of the stack, of your stack was it? Let's, it's in chips.
Uh, it was about one fifth, one sixth, something like that.
Doubling this guy up, you're in the big blind, so you're closing the action.
He had a pretty big bounty.
I mean, you, so he had like twenty bucks on his head, which looking around is like the second biggest one at the table.
Yeah, the guy shots eleven digs. Into his six.
So, I mean, this is interesting, I think it's too wide, but um. I don't know, I don't know the answer, I would, this is something I would have, I'd have to put in HRC cuz it's unique, right? You have a lot of chips, so. And it's a big bounty and it's just, it's a final table scenario and he's. You're obviously behind whatever his eleven big blind jamming range is. I uh, I don't know, this is an interesting one.
I, I, I just kinda, I, I knew, I, I know it's too wide, like for sure, for sure, I just, I just wanted to know like what would be the bottom.
I think you probably call all your ace X, I think you probably call all your suited Broadway. I think you probably call most of your offsuit Broadway, like you're gonna need.
I have charts for that, Dooly.
Yeah, this is, this is, this is an interesting one, I don't know what the floor would be, but I, I would assume you're calling like nine, ten suited here, probably. Like you're probably very wide here.
One of the ideas when you're bounty hunting like this is in situations where he's jamming ace or ace three, ace two. You wanna have two cards above the bottom of his range, so when you're calling off, you wanna call with. And you're, and you're bounty hunting, you wanna call with nine, ten, so that when he is a small pair, like pocket twos, pocket fours. Or he has a hand like ace four, king four, king six, you have two cards above the bottom card that he can hit, so when you hit. He has less of a redraw against you.
Yeah, I, I like that, Peter, like I, I think it's, you're looking for the most common forty percent equity plus arrangements you can find. So like, that's like where you have two middle cards and he has one below and one above, or like you have one below. You have the, you have the smallest and the second biggest card, those kind of scenarios, like you're, you're okay taking those to the street. You don't need to have like a positive equity situation here, obviously, but um. You just don't wanna show up with like less than thirty percent equity here.
What is actually good, I think, is everyone else at the table saw this and now, and now you're gonna have a lot of. Because those people would think, fuck, you can call with anything.
Yeah, and uh, yeah, you, you probably bought some future fold equity here for sure.
Yeah, this is what I mean.
Yeah, I think, uh, I think you're looking for a hand like queen seven or queen eight as the bottom of your range here.
That seems reasonable, Pete, like I, I think like those are probably okay, taking a gamble with Dooly's position in the, in the tournament.
Yeah.
Cool. Awesome. All right, guys, I have to head out for fifteen to twenty minutes, I don't know if you wanna keep going or not. Uh, when I come back, I'm gonna give out action and then mystery bounty.
Yeah, do that, please. What time's that start, by the way, Louis, did you check?
I don't know, but I gotta grab food before that starts.
The, the, the day two is uh, is, is what, is what's today?
It is today, yeah.
It's today, oh, I think it's, I was thinking as well yesterday.
Yeah, I don't know why, they, they always do these day twos on Monday for whatever reason, but, all right, I'll see you in a bit. Do you leave the study session up, I guess?
God, I, I hate, I hate that, I don't have these in big ones.
I know, it's painful.